Ladies and gentlemen, it is time to begin the work session for tonight's Huntington City Council Meeting. The invocation will be led by Gary Brady, and Mr. Mark Bates is not in here, but I am going to ask him to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Share the love.
He said no.
Mr. Mr. Bates will not be here.
Oh.
There's a reason he's going out.
Oh. In that case, Mr. Scott Lemley.
(laughing).
Mr. Lemley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. First item is Second Reunion Ordinance 2025-0-25, an ordinance of council amending, modifying, reenacting the zoning ordinance of the City of Huntington, West Virginia, 1998 as revised, and the zoning map as revised attached thereto as part thereof by the zoning to C2 Highway Commercial from R4 Two Family Residential Parcels addressed as 321 30th Street, 2978 4th Avenue, 2964 and 64 rear 4th Avenue, 2962 4th Avenue, 2960 4th Avenue, and 2958 4th Avenue, as is sponsored by Ms. Linda Blau. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I'm Kinsey Rowan with the Planning Department. Huntington First Church of the Nazarene is requesting to rezone the subject property from R4 Two Family Residential to C2 Highway Commercial to permit the operation of the coffee shop within the existing church building. The use is proposed as a community-serving amenity operated by and in partnership with the church. A small-scale church-operated coffee shop may provide a community benefit and gathering space. This use is in line with the vision of the comprehensive plan to allow small, sustainable development in residential neighborhoods that serve residential needs. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of council? All right. Moving on, next item is the Second Reunion Ordinance 2025-0-34, an ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into an easement agreement with the West Virginia American Water Company for the installation of a raw water line. Mr. Dameron.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Scott Dameron, City Attorney. This matter is about six years in the making, so I've lived with it for a while. PSC is requiring West Virginia American Water to add a second raw water line from the Ohio River, which is an emergency line for treatable water. The new water line requires an easement from the City of Huntington because it actually crosses the city's property where the flood wall is. So negotiations have taken place. They've involved the Public Service Commission, Corps of Engineers, the City of Huntington, Huntington Storm Water Utility, and the Water Company. So what the agreement has come to is that the West Virginia Water Ameri-- West Virginia American Water Company will build a structure over the flood wall so that it does not touch the flood wall with a pipeline attached, and that'll enter the system that way. One of the requirements that the Storm Water Utility had was that the whole thing must be disassembled within 48 hours if there is an emergency involving the flood wall. The location is just off the east end of Merrill Avenue, right at the flood wall. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Dameron? All right. Thank you, sir. Next item is Second Reunion Ordinance 2025-0-35, an ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a deed, a parcel of land identified as 98 Third Avenue, which is adjacent to the hub property. Good evening.
Good evening. Sam Ransbottom, Assistant City Attorney. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to acquire by deed 98 Third Avenue West, immediately to the west of the hub. Cost of the transaction is $5,000 plus closing costs, and at this time, the city intends to use it for parking for the hub. Can answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Next item is Second Reunion Ordinance 2025-0-37, an ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting Articles 311 and 371 and 509 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Huntington as revised concerning assemblies, pedestrians, and disorderly conduct. Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening. Erica Hernandez, Assistant City Attorney. The purpose of the ordinance before you is to increase pedestrian safety and to remove outdated, potentially troublesome, language. I want to address some of the concerns that have been expressed previously, however, regarding this proposed amendment. Taking things in turn, under 311.06, you'll notice the addition of a minimum amount of space to be left for pedestrian traffic to pass when a group is assembled, specifically three feet. Limiting the amount of space on a sidewalk that a public assembly may use has been repeatedly upheld in federal courts, including the Fourth Circuit, of which we're a part. The courts recognize that municipalities have the power to manage the competing uses of public spaces such as sidewalks, to protect both the rights and the safety of all concerned. Three feet was chosen because the regulations promulgated by the United States Department of Justice and adopted by the United States Department of Transportation, which set out the design standards and accessibility guidelines for building and facilities covered by the Americans with Disabilities Act, requires a minimum of 36 inches of clear width for walking spaces. This doesn't mean that an assembly can't spread out when there are no pedestrians passing by, but when pedestrians do pass by, the group will need to provide at least three feet of space for them. This only applies to the unpermitted assemblies. If a group wishes to block the entire sidewalk, then they just need to apply for a permit. Moving on to 371.03, this section restricts standing or sitting in medians less than 36 inches wide when the speed limit is 20 miles per hour or higher. This language without the speed limit restriction has been upheld by the 10th Circuit. The Fourth Circuit, however-- remember, that's where we are-- has made it clear that they want to see evidence behind this type of restriction. So since we know that there has been a marked increase in pedestrian deaths over the last 10-plus years, and we know that studies have shown that the risk of death of a pedestrian that's been hit by a motor vehicle begins at around 20 miles per hour, the additional speed limit restriction was added. I also asked the city's traffic safety director if information was available regarding pedestrian vehicle collisions within the city. Since January 1st of 2023, there have been 96 reported pedestrian vehicle collisions. Injuries or death were reported in 86% of the collisions. Of the 86%, two incidents resulted in the death of the pedestrian, and six incidents resulted in incapacitating injuries. 371.06 is one case where we're removing old language and modernizing it. The U.S. Supreme Court issued a seminal case in 2015, Reed versus the town of Gilbert, which really broadened the expectation of content neutrality in local ordinances and has significantly influenced how lower courts consider municipal ordinance challenges. This modification makes the ordinance more content neutral than it previously was and should bring us in line with current constitutional interpretation. 509.01 removes the outdated language prohibiting begging for alms and adds a restriction against aggressive conduct towards others. 509.02 defines what aggressive conduct is. These definitions fall under the broad categories of assault and battery. These def-- I'm sorry. West Virginia Code includes in its definition of assault unlawfully committing an act that places another in reasonable apprehension of immediate-- of immediately receiving a violent injury, and in its definition of battery unlawfully and intentionally making physical contact of an insulting or revoking nature to a person of another. So battery requires physical contact, assault does not. Words that you see repeatedly in these definitions are intentionally or intended to, recklessly, likely to, and knowingly. These words are very important because the law has particular ways to determine whether intent, mindset, or awareness is present behind actions. When something is done intentionally, a person consciously desires a specific result. He or she wants the words or the behaviors to be received as threats, and that's the whole point of it. This is why the words intentionally and intended to are included in these definitions. Another is when something is done with knowledge, meaning the speaker or actor is aware that a particular result is practically certain to follow after the words or actions. This is why words-- the words likely to and knowingly are used in these definitions. Now, the third one's a little different. It's recklessness. The court has defined recklessness as the conscious disregard for a substantial risk that a particular conduct will cause harm to another without a justifiable reason for doing so. Basically, the person speaking or acting doesn't care if another person is put in danger, doesn't care if that person comes to believe that they're in danger because of their words or actions. In every definition, A through H, you'll find these terms. They are there deliberately to protect the lesser behaviors from being caught up with those that are intended by the term aggressive conduct.
Any questions for Ms. Hernandez?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize. I don't have it right in front of me to cite it, so there was a sections about interacting with vehicles. Thank you so much. This one right here, under aggressive contact. Intentionally or-- oh, sorry. Person, pedestrian, vehicle in operation, et cetera, but then it defines aggressive conduct, which includes like B, making physical contact with a touching vehicle while in operation without the driver's consent. This is a weird question. Police officers, when investigating crimes, interact with vehicles, with people inside of them quite frequently. Are we making it illegal for our police officers to do their work investigating crimes where they stop people in vehicles? No. Can you describe how that's the case? Because there's state rules that exempt like officers being able to like speed limits, like they're exempt from speed limits and things like that. So can you also explain how they're not going to be impacted? Because again, I'm worried that residents are going to use this as a reason to come at us for totally appropriate behavior.
Well, you have to look at the rest of the things with it. If the officer is intentionally making physical contact while-- if they're trying to make some sort of a fear response that's outside the limits of normal police behavior, the police officers have the ability to get their job done.
Sure.
The law does have latitude for that. It's really not going to be any different than any of the other times that they are doing their job.
Perhaps we should add an exemption for law enforcement so that if they are considered recklessly, which you described as having knowledge that XYZ is going to happen but doing it anyway. So for instance, if a police officer had to, I don't know, make physical contact or touching another person without that person's consent, like, just a suggestion because I could see where someone might be like, hey. Or here's another example. What about my-- at the bottom, knowingly continuing to seek engagement within three feet of a person after the person has made a negative response to initial contact? My teenager, if I say, if I'm talking to them and I want to take away her iPhone and she doesn't like it and I'm within three feet of her, do I got to step five feet back? Or she's going to call the cops on me and have me arrested? What if I was doing that in a public place? Or what if I was having a fight with my spouse down at Ninth Street Live? And we get into a fight, and they're like, get away from me. And they're like, I'm your husband. No way. And then I can have my husband arrested because he's not-- he's within three feet of me? Is that possible? Is that even distribution of the rules, or are we in trouble?
Just let me make a comment, Mr. Chair, if I can.
Yes, sir.
Police officers are sworn to act as police officers. They have the authority to do what is necessary to preserve the peace. They can arrest somebody and grab them by the wrist and handcuff them. They are not subject to this. These ordinances are all subject to reasonable use. I mean, if we try to take the most out-there issue and say, oh, what if this happens? What if I grab my child's hand? That's not what these are intended to address, and everyone knows that. I mean, we couldn't pass any ordinances if that was the case. We cannot pass an assault ordinance. We could not pass a battery ordinance. We could not pass any type of ordinance in which outlaws aggressive conduct or commission of a crime if we're worried about somebody grabbing their child's hand. I mean, it all has to do with reasonableness.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a sort of, I guess, a follow-up question? Or it's more of a-- I don't know what it is. The part of this that gives me the most pause is that Section H, because as you've said, you know, Ms. Hernandez, A through G all include this intentionally or recklessly. You know, I feel like they're less vague. But when we talk about knowingly continuing to seek engagement, what does seeking engagement mean? Within three feet of a person after the person has made a negative response, what does it mean by a negative response? I mean, I feel like those-- I feel like that language is much more vague than what's included in A through G, because, I mean, and I hear you on the most extreme cases where you're talking about children and law enforcement, but, you know, often the Jehovah's Witnesses are set up outside the library with a table on the corner. And if I'm waiting at that light to cross the street and they are preaching or-- I mean, they do. They seek engagement, and they're very polite. I mean, I want to be clear. I'm not singling them out. I'm just thinking of, you know, if I have to stand there and wait for that light and they are continuing to try to engage me just by, you know, making public speech or something like that, how does something like that work? Because they are knowingly continuing to seek engagement. You know, if I turn around and say, hey, cut it out, do they have to stop talking?
Well, at this-- I think it's where the three feet come in. I mean, typically with something like this, someone is going to-- if they don't want to engage with someone, they tend to move away from them. This language actually was from Hill versus Colorado, United States Supreme Court case. They upheld a eight-feet space in front of a healthcare clinic so that if someone engaged, they were rebuffed. If they continued and followed them or whatever within eight feet, that was upheld as being a valid ordinance.
But that's a very specific set of circumstances, right? When you're talking about protesting outside of a health clinic, this is much more vague. I mean, one of the things that I raised at a prior-- I don't know if it was first reading or in committee-- does catcalling fall within this? You know, if a man is three feet away from a woman and makes some suggestive comment and she says, you know, leave me alone, where-- I mean, this could be many different things that maybe don't rise to the level of the penalties that are provided for in this ordinance, but there's just-- there's just no definition to that, like there is in A through G. And I mean, I think, you know, I think maybe we could agree that A through G do include words like intentionally, recklessly. You know, those are legal definitions and words that have a legal standard attached to them. Continuing to seek engagement and a negative response do not have those same defined meanings.
Right. We're going for content neutrality on that.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about from a legal standard. For something to rise to the level of reckless conduct, we know what that means. But for something to constitute continuing to seek engagement, what does that mean?
Well, I mean, I think what is important here is that someone has already given you a no. So this is a no-means-no situation. They've already said they don't want to talk to you about whatever it is, you know, whether it be the catcalling, whether it be a-- someone trying to proselytize, whether it be, hey, I want to read your palm. I don't know. But whatever it is, they've already said no, and if the person continues to come within-- if you get within three feet, you're pretty much within arms' reach at that point. And so in-- if that-- which adds an extra level of fear and anxiety if someone is that close. So regardless of what it is, it's-- yeah, we don't have-- it's like I said, it's written broadly, especially particularly, so that it is content neutral, so that it can apply to whatever the situation happens to be.
And I understand the content neutrality. I just, you know. I think that it could be content neutral while being a little better defined, like the other, you know, the seven sections preceding it are.
Well, the Fourth Circuit heads up in-- has said that if something is materially indistinguishable, it would be upheld. So we're looking for language that is most likely to be upheld by court should we ever be challenged.
I understand and appreciate that. I'm just not sure that that language is going to cut that, so.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think we have pretty well researched that issue, and that it is constitutional. I think it's really a matter of whether or not council wants that in there. I mean, I think we've established the constitutionality of that language, but whether or not council wants that provision in is up to council.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
At our last reading, I had asked for more information regarding what brought this about for Section 509.1 with panhandling, with the aggressive conduct, of how many times it has occurred within the city that somebody has reported aggressive conduct to their cars. I mean, I have seen folks standing on the side of the street with a piece of cardboard asking for, you know, funds and have never once seen somebody get out of hand with that. So is there statistics or something to back up why this was brought before council?
Well, we didn't have aggressive conduct previously. I did check with both the HPD and with the municipal court, and we don't have records that really answer that question. I probably should have sent you an email though. I'm sorry about that. But they were researching into it, and we just-- the data is not kept in such a fashion to be able to give you the answer of what you're looking for. I'm sorry.
So there's no evidence for this to be put on the books for our city?
We didn't have aggressive conduct before, so it's not something that was being reported.
Okay. Is-- may I also ask who brought these changes to be put on the agenda? Was it a council member? Is it brought by legal? Is it the administration for these changes to be brought about?
That's not-- I don't know how it started. It was just given me to do.
So we don't know who brought this to council to be put on the agenda?
I am not able to answer that question.
Is there a reason why you can't answer that question?
I'll answer the question. It doesn't matter. It's sponsored by Jason Arthur. I mean, what's the point of trying to dig into who asked for it?
I'm just curious what factual happenings happened for this to be-- become code and change different things with protesting, with panhandling, with-- I mean, I think that us as council to make a decision on having this within our city code, we should have the knowledge of how things are brought about and who brought it forward, just to educate ourselves.
Well, one of the things we did was we took loitering out finally. We took begging and solicitation out, and we thought it's necessary to have some modification to the ordinance to have some control over what goes on on the streets. I mean, for the life of me, I think this is a very benign ordinance. I mean, it just has reasonable controls and removes solicitation. It removes loitering. Why is there a problem with that?
Well, I mean, solicitation, we asked previously at the last meeting if the Huntington Fire Department boot drive would be affected by this, and Ms. Hernandez says yes. I also have other questions about youth leagues. We have a lot of folks in our community that struggle to buy groceries or pay their electric bills, so for our kids to have something to do, I've seen a ton of youth leagues stand on the side of the road with signs that say, here's a QR code, help my football team. That will also nullify that.
I'm not-- I'm not sure we're connecting here. We remove prohibition of solicitation from the ordinances. We remove the prohibition.
But they can't-- they can't so like engage with vehicles.
In an aggressive or threatening manner.
We're in the middle of the street when the speed limit's over 20.
Yes.
Well, so like I grew up in Sarita, which is not downtown Huntington, but yeah, as a CK High School kid, I would-- we would stand in the middle of the four-lane highway with buckets, soliciting donations, and the speed limit is over 20. So I can't speak to Huntington High School or the other high schools right now, but I imagine that that's what you're referring to. So but you said there would be a solution for that.
I'm trying to get 90 more things in.
Well, they can't do it in a dangerous manner. They probably have to get a permit so that they would probably use their trucks like they usually do in order to solicit funds on the side of the street.
So a permit process, or maybe if the mayor gives permission?
There would be additional permitting process like there would be for any kind of group solicitation.
Which has already been stated.
I-- one last comment with the chair's permission. I want to thank you for the explanation that you gave to address some of the concerns that the public has raised. I know one that I had personally was the three feet and the width of the sidewalk is four feet, and so I appreciated the clarification that this applies to aggressive conduct because my question was, you know, I take up more than a foot on the sidewalk, but if someone passes by, because I'm a reasonable person, and they say, excuse me, I'd like to get by, I'm going to step back. So I appreciate very much the clarification that it's intentional or aggressive conduct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Moving on, next item on the agenda is the Second Reunion Ordinance 2025-0-38, an ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting the zoning ordinance of the City of Huntington, West Virginia, 1998 as revised, and the zoning map as revised attached thereto as part thereof by the zoning of C1 Neighborhood Commercial from R2 Single Family Residential, four parcels in the 1800 block of Jefferson Avenue, 1801 Jefferson Avenue, 1809 Jefferson Avenue, and 1813 Jefferson Avenue, and 1821 Jefferson Avenue. Welcome back.
Kinsey Rowan, planner with the Planning Department. IBEW Local Union 317 would like to rezone the remainder of the 1800 block of Jefferson Avenue from R2 Single Family to C1 Neighborhood Commercial to be able to build an outdoor training facility as a part of their current technical center. The rezoning will not negatively affect the surrounding areas but benefit the public, including public health, safety, and general welfare by adding additional security to the area. Proper maintenance will also be conducted on the property, and the use of the property will now be utilized instead of sitting vacant, which it has done for approximately two years now. If you have any questions, I'll be able to answer them.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Next item is the Second Reunion Ordinance 2025-0-39, an ordinance of council setting the election district and zoning classification for the territory at 1 Wildcat Way, formerly known as 200 Warehouse Road, the New Meadows School property, and portions of the public roads of Woodville Drive and Warehouse Road as Election District 6 and zoning District R1. Ms. Hernandez, welcome back.
Good evening. Given the time with council's permission, could I just provide the full explanation at council?
Yes, you can. Give us the Cliff Notes.
The Cliff Notes is we are required to set the zoning election district, and that's what this does.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Next item is the Second Reunion Ordinance 2025-0-41, an ordinance of council repealing Article 187 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Huntington as revised concerning the Cable Television Advisory Board. Ms. Hernandez.
Okay. The Cliff Notes from this one is the Cable Television Advisory Board hasn't met or conducted any business in over 10 years, and we don't really have a purpose for it anymore.
Any questions? All right. Next item, Second Reunion Ordinance 2025-0-42, an ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting Part 15 Articles 1505 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Huntington as revised concerning the Bureau of Fire Prevention.
This ordinance creates the definition of an plans examiner, and they will conduct plans reviews in-house instead of sending them to the state.
Any questions for Ms. Hernandez? Moving on, Second Reunion Ordinance 2025-0-43, an ordinance of council amending, modifying, and reenacting Part 15 Articles 1711 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Huntington as revised concerning building permits and renew of plans. Ms. Hernandez.
This does the same thing as the last one, creates the authority for a plans examiner to review and--
to review in-house, and it also adds some important language from the building code into our ordinance so it's accessible for everyone.
All right, any questions for Ms. Hernandez? Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, first reading of an ordinance twenty twenty-five dash O dash three six, an ordinance of council amending, modifying, reenacting Article one one six concerning the management adjustment to the resolution of claims against the city and setting guidelines for the payment of such claims. Mr. Dameron?
Yes, sir. Very quickly, this extends the authority to administratively settle damage and injury claims on the part of the city due to the increased deductibles that the city has. This has come before you, before, at Ms. Welling's suggestion, we included that the mayor, in consultation with the city attorney, can settle the claims, and I also added that anything above twenty-five thousand dollars would require a port, report to council after the settlement to, to discuss the terms.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right. Next item is first regim in ordinance twenty twenty-five dash O dash four six, an ordinance of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement, one with the West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, and Cuyahoga Interstate Planning Commission for the Bike Pedestrian Connector Project.
Cliff Notes, this is an ordinance that allows us to enter into agreement to pay for roadway improvements along the ACF development, and I'll tell you more later.
Any questions? All right. Next item is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash one oh five, a resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Frontier Communications for unapproved land. Ms. Hernandez.
This will be a public hearing on a land lease with Frontier Communications. They have leased this property for at least twenty-five years, likely longer, and they wish to continue leasing it.
Any questions for Ms. Hernandez? All right. Next is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash one oh six, a resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to furnish the Huntington Police Department with six twenty twenty-five Ford Police Interceptor utility, all-wheel-drive patrol vehicles. Good evening.
Good evening. Mike Charme, Deputy Chief, Huntington PD. This would authorize the mayor to furnish the police department with six vehicles. A bid process was put out, and the winner is mid-state Ford of Somersville, West Virginia in the amount of two hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seven seventy-two, and the funding for this purchase will come from the Huntington Police Department State Asset Forfeiture Fund. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. And that brings us to Good and Welfare. Anybody early? All right. We'll see you here in about one minute.